Roll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, September 7th, 2016 at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
I would that we take this moment to remember all of those in our community that are less fortunate than we are, both locally as well as globally. Remember all of those that have lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers, including a good friend and hard-working individual in this office, Rose, mother transition recently since we were in the meeting last, and so we want to send prayers and love to her and her family as well. And finally, we ask that we remember, excuse me, that we ask our God and our Creator to give us the right information, give us the wisdom to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval minutes for the meeting of Wednesday, August 17th, 2016, and bills for payment on September 2nd and 9th, 2016. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky.
Any requests for repository sales? Any requests for repository sales, please come to the microphone.
Hello, my name is Bill Power, and I've requested the purchase of a property, 832 West 17th Street, the purpose of which is to kind of control it as a cut-through. I have a rental property just north of it, and this has just been a site of late-night meetings and unwanted trash. I do maintain it, and I have been for the past almost seven years, and I'd like to own it and possibly fence it in, and keep the grass cut and maintain it full-time.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you. We'll vote on this at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Any other requests for repository sales?
Hi, my name is Heather Weissmiller, and I'm asking to buy, I believe it's 951 East 11th Street. We own 945 East 11th Street, and that is an empty lot next door, and we've been mowing it, and we just want to be able to use it as extra room for our tenants.
So it would be in addition to the backyard, or the side yard, basically?
Side, yeah, side yard, and we have been mowing it.
Any questions from council?
Is that a business right next to that lot also?
On the other side, there is a business there.
Okay, because I saw that exhaust fan and...
There used to be a house, and they just knocked it down recently, probably a year ago, I think, so...
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you. Any other requests for repository sales?
My brother would like to purchase the property.
Okay, please state your name for the record.
George Marie Espada Ortiz.
Okay.
My brother George is...
Okay.
He would like to purchase the lots on 732 East 13th and 730 East 13th. He would like to keep it in, and he's owning it.
Okay, do you own, does George own any property adjacent to it, or do you...
Yeah, he's on 729 East 12th Street.
Backside of the property. So it'd be like basically in his backyard?
Yes.
Okay. And what does he plan to do with the property, just maintain it for yard?
Yeah, and he wants to put a gate around it.
Okay. Any questions from council? Sorry, I started talking.
That's good.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other requests for repository sales? Seeing none, we'll continue on with the meeting. Citizens to be heard, the first citizen to call in ahead of time was Mr. Randy Barnes.
Good morning, council. My name is Randy Barnes, 109 Walton Point. Good to see you all, administration guests. It's been my pleasure to be down here, this started my 10th year, to be somewhat of a regular person in front of council. And I think in those 10 years, I've seen a lot of things, but I haven't seen anything quite as crazy as what's happened over the last three months, starting with taking the $40,000 away from the minority community development centers, which was 2% of the grant. $40,000 had to be used for a new code enforcement officer because the study said we should do better code enforcement on the Bayfront. But really, we shouldn't say just the Bayfront, we should say the entire city, because we have 6,000 properties that are in very bad repair. That number keeps growing, and it has been this decade or this millennium, it's been growing. So we go ahead and we take that $40,000 away from the community development centers, so we can hire a code enforcement officer to add to the five we already have, and then a month later, we find out that the administration and the current code enforcement office has never told us they don't have the tools to do the job. So council says, geez, you know, we didn't know that. You never told us that. All you told us is we need another code enforcement officer to solve everything. So once they get it, they say, oh, timeout. Don't expect much of a change. We don't have the tools to do our job. So council says, okay, Mr. Solicitor, well, the person that sometimes sits there, the solicitor, please rewrite the ordinance or do something for us. So how's that going? How's that progress going? We know the $40,000 taken away from the community development centers could have been used this summer. Instead, we got an extra person sitting upstairs that doesn't have the tools to do their job, and council knew it, or they know it now. You know, you had the chance to give up this busing thing and give the city of Erie the taxpayers a break on their taxes. You realize that? You could say, you know what, county, take the busing, and if you want the police and fire, take them too. Why not? Regionalism. But no, instead, this council said, hey, we want the power to appoint that director down there, because you know, when you appoint a director, you get a lot of votes, because that director's going to bring his family and all his friends and relatives, make sure he takes care of the council people, right? Because that's how politics works. So instead of giving the city of Erie taxpayers a break, we said, no, we're going to fight, in fact, we're going to go to court. We're going to spend extra money of your taxpayer dollars because we've got so much, well, we don't have that much of it, because we had to take $40,000 from the community development centers. So we really don't have that much money in the city, do we? Extra. Two identical bills from McDonald's. Within seven days of each other, one, West 26th Street in Milcreek, one, 12th and Sassafras in the city of Erie. You know what it costs? It costs 10% more to buy the identical $12 breakfast. It costs the identical, I'm sorry, it costs 10% more to buy the same breakfast in the city of Erie than it does across the property line. What do you think's the difference is? I'll tell you what the difference is. It's the taxes. It's the taxes. If you don't think it is, it's the taxes. Businesses pay more in taxes in the city of Erie than they do in Milcreek. So council had the chance to give up that busing, relieve the burden a little bit on the taxpayers, but what did they do? Say, oh, no way, we're going to fight over this. There's a lot of power. There's a lot of power when you get to appoint the EMTA director down there, isn't there? Now, we wouldn't want to give up any power. We wouldn't want to work with the county. We've got to work against them. We've got to show them, man, boy, we're the city, and we'll show you. Can that EMTA be better? It's a good busing system now, but it can be better. If you don't think it can, you ought to leave the room, because you think status quo is the way to go. Hey, that would be a good slogan for some of you guys that want to run mayor. Status quo is the way to go. Status quo is the way to go. I like that. Any one of you guys can use that in your campaign, because that's what we're doing. If the mayor says, this is what I want, status quo is the way to go, whatever you say. Look forward to Senate term number, what would you call that, version two, a year and a half from now? Status quo is the way to go. It's amazing what you come up with on a few hours of sleep. Say, thank you very much. You guys have a great day.
Thank you for your time. Next citizen to be heard, Julia Kalipa. I don't see Julia here, so with that, we'll continue on with the meeting. Citizens to be heard, anyone can come to the microphone at this time.
Morning, council.
Good morning.
My name is McDonald. My property's 19th and Reed. You know, that beating of that young man still bothers me. It should bother you all. You haven't said anything about it. But you know what? I'm going to have to talk to God about y'all. Y'all just, you're not doing your job. You should have been the first come out with voice and about what went down. Your policemen are out of control. You've got five or six out there that is jumping out of cars, beating up people. When they start coming up dead, then you're going to look at this situation. You know, you can push a man, but so far. I remember reading about the Second World War. The Jews were the peoples that, they were a loving people. But when they found out that Hitler was killing them and sending them to that oven, they started fighting back. When somebody's killing you, and you're afraid of them, they're bullying you, you might as well die doing something for yourself. Why are you going to let somebody just kick you in your butt, up one side and down the other? I don't understand. I don't understand y'all, but God will deal with you in His time. I promise you that. You better get you a Bible and read it. God will deal with you in His time. There's an old saying, a song, "You can't hurt God." I'd like to see Him moving. He's moving, we just can't see it now. And He will deal with you all. I promise you that. The Bible don't lie. You better get you a Bible. I want to get back to that, taking that money from them kids, the poorest of the poorest. God going to deal with you about that, because those are His kids. Your kids are different. I, that, you didn't have no money for those kids, but out in the county, you brought some of them in, working. You got money for them. This is a prejudiced town. I mean, the peoples here, that's why we're behind. God don't like nothing like that, and He'll deal with that too in time. I remember one time somebody came here checking on racism. They didn't go to no black folks, they went to white folks. They should have been going to black folks. If you want to know about racism, we the one live in it. Y'all acting like I ain't saying nothing, but it'll come back to you. It'll come back to you, because what come around goes around, I promise you that. You, I know what's on your minds. I really don't. Our next mayor, I hope we get a good mayor. I hope we get somebody with some compassion, because what we got now ain't too cool. How can you call yourself a mayor for the people when you don't go around white folks? You're scared of them. Why? We're not going to eat you. We're paying our taxes. That's all we're good for, is paying taxes. We get no police protecting when the police come, they come and they beat the hell out of you. That boy they got for, somebody destroyed evidence, those were his cameras. He didn't have to do what they said. The city didn't give him them cameras. I don't know. I just don't know. You do the wrong thing. Things you should be doing, you don't do. You don't do. I look at that center down there, Martin Center, that old bank building down there. They don't put so much money in that, but you can't do nothing for those neighborhood centers. You sent the money to St. Martin's. Somebody stole some money over there, and you didn't do nothing about it. You didn't take nothing from over there. This, you're a prejudiced people, and God will deal with you. I promise you that. He going to deal with you?
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time. Any other citizens to be heard?
This is Paul Newseath. I live at 111 East 11th at Friendship Towers, and I heard that the Y on Tented Beach, where it's not handicap accessory for handicaps, wheelchair that can get in and out, and I heard that that was a state law. They had to have handicap accessory to get in the Y on Tented Beach, because they're closing the one on 300 State Street, because Hammond needs the office space. So I asked Monica, I said, are you going to move into a different location? And they said, no, because the weights are going to go over there in Tented Beach, all the weights are. And like cash, you said, they said the building was too old to put an elevator in or something to put in for handicap. And I did go over to Gannon, because they build a new weight facility for people that can exercise and that. It's a beautiful place. I was in there. On the second floor, they have the weights, and on the down, on the floor, they have the pool room and everything. If it's a 110-year-old building, they could probably tear that building down or build another building like Gannon. All Gannon has is a steel frame, it would brick around it, metal on the top. Boy, and that's a beautiful place. But I heard that that's a state law. They had to have handicap accessory on Tented Beach, which today they don't have it. And Monica said that if, once you got in there, because they have elevators inside your place, you can't get around there because of the stairs. But couldn't they take a stair out near the bottom and widen it out so the wheelchair can get in there around the elevator there? Because wouldn't it be cheaper to do that than take it out of the wall and moving it back? And another thing, I watch the news a lot. They're building a grocery store at the West Erie Plaza. Well, that's not going to do us any good, the people living in the downtown area. You got that, all that space over there, open space on 13th and Holland and 14th and Holland, and you have that opening there behind the Family Dollar. You mean to tell me you guys couldn't put a grocery store in there so people can go to? That, that's, and I think the bus company where the city always ran it, I think you can see the way it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Any other citizens to be heard?
My name is Joshua Rizzo, and I'm just a concerned citizen, and I like surfing the internet quite a lot, doing a little bit of research. I'm a reasonable crackpot, not too out of the ordinary. I'm just looking around at the situation in general here. I just feel a little concerned. What I'm trying to do here is I'm bringing a mop and a broom. Like here, I'm here to help. I'm not sure exactly what to do. I'm not exactly sure what you have control of. I went to the, another meeting that was for the school board, and their budget deficit, and I believe Harrisburg is bullying us, because I'm sure Erie is, like, the size of Erie, the contribution of Erie, it has its own fair share of taxes, and the school board really needs that, like, the amount it should be getting should be definitely more than it was, and it's in debt and all that, yada, yada. Put that aside, I wanted to present other potential solutions. I'm not sure if you have control over that or not. Like, I know Colorado, they legalize hemp or weed, and they pay their school, the taxes on that pay for all their schools, and they have a surplus. And if we're having a deficit, like, the other speaker here was concerned over the cuts, the cuts of funding. Like, I want to have enough funding all around for everybody, and there's no shortage on goods or supplies, and in fact, the consumption of them leads to more jobs. The only problem here is the economics, the money. There's like, there's a shortage of money. It's not really getting around, so all the supplies are all backing up, and they're not going anywhere, and they're probably going bad a lot more often than they should. So we've got to get these goods flowing somehow, and I think that one of the ways to loosen up is like, we could try to push legalization here more, more so. There's other ideas we could use, like, we're a commonwealth. Like, perhaps we could use the basic income idea, or, because I heard Sweden was going through there with that idea, or was it Norway, maybe both? And that idea is actually pretty reasonable, especially if we're a commonwealth. Like, I'm not sure exactly what you have control over, because I'm sure there's probably a lot of other people who are, like, supervising you. Like, I'm sure you're not on top of the entire situation, like, probably Harrisburg oversees you. I'm not exactly sure how this all works. And I get the feeling that the general public's not exactly sure what you have control over either. So I think there's just, there's a bit of a disconnect between you and us, and so I'm just trying to bring us closer so we can figure out, like, what can we do as a community? Like, how do we, how do we work? Like, I'm trying to bring a mop and a broom so that people don't bring a pitchfork and a torch. Like, okay, let's work this out, okay? We can do this. This is the 26th, this is 2016. We have a lot of ideas out there flowing around. We can, like, just grab onto a couple of those, and we've actually seen some of them working. Like, Colorado, that weed legalization for them really worked out. Like, they have a surplus for, like, government spending. Their schools are paid for. Like, yeah, okay, yeah. I think I have a general message across. You can contact me, I have an address. I'm not sure how to get ahold of any of you very well. Like, give me a quest to do in life. I'm in my own financial difficulties, but you know, I'm hanging in there, basically as much as another everyday citizen. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other citizens to be heard?
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
My name is Mike Gordell. I reside right now at the city mansion. I'm here on the, right now, what we was, first of all, I like to say that I'm a registered voter. I'm a Democrat, and I vote for, if you're there on council, I have voted for you, if you're a Democrat. And I would like to also let the public know that I'm a Democrat, and if we voted for council, any city or county votes that we vote in office, that we should look at you very well with the job you're doing. And the last time I was here, council, this is the second time I've been here, and you explained to us later on about the situation with the cops and everything, so I'm beyond that. It's in the federal, federal thing right now. But I'd like to take this moment to acknowledge Ms. Arrington and the fine job she's been doing, and her award that she received earlier today. I haven't, hadn't had a chance to mention that.
Thank you.
But I think you're doing a fine job along with everyone there. I know you have a hard job to do. Speaking of this EMT thing, what I read in the paper seemed pretty good. I don't know. You're electing four from the city and in the county, electing four members. And I understand on page, on the next page, it's the ninth member. I don't know who the ninth member, who's going to vote on the ninth member, but it seemed like it's pretty fair right now. But I wouldn't sign anything until, you know, really, that it's written up the way you want it there. But I really don't see the problem. I got a problem with Ms. Dog Camper. She speaks about that she's for the city. She supposed to represent the whole city, not just the county, and seemed like she got more doing with the county business than the city business. Like, earlier, I seen her on the news, and she was talking about the WIC office and moving it out to the county. And these people here in the city would lose their jobs when it's been here so long. So she did veto the county decision with this bus situation, and I think she can do more. Argument, the argument I see with the county and the city all the time is, you know, we're all, we're all, we're all representing the city of Erie and the county. I look at it the same, like, a dime. If you have a dime in your pocket, it's still the same dime, the county and the city. If wherever you flip, flip the dime, it's still going to turn over the heads or tails. We're still representing the city of Erie and the county of Erie. So all that arguing, we should represent the whole city and the whole county, and we should be able to come together on something. Mr. President, I know you disagree right now, what you looked at, but what I've seen in the paper, it looks pretty good, and it looks pretty fair right now. So you're the president. You, I hope you do what you have to do, whatever you need to do.
Excuse me.
If it's not fair, thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard?
Thank you, council. My name is Dan Dubay. I live at 9 Eagle Street in Northeast. I'm here to support, or asking you to support the resolution for the compromise over the EMTA. You know, I drove here today from Northeast. I drive to downtown Erie every day. I park in the parking garage. Costs me $60 a month, costs me gas money, and that's a privilege that I have. You know, some months ago, the county council held a meeting where they talked about regional transit and a vision for broad public transit. There's some really beautiful ideas there, I thought. I've lived, had the privilege to live in a lot of really great cities that had really great public transit. But again, for me, it's about privilege, and all those things are very exciting. I think it'd be great if there was a viable bus from Northeast. I know there is a bus, but it doesn't run frequently enough to work for me. But the reason I got involved in public transit here locally was that, you know, some months ago, I worked with a group of community members, and we worked to identify problems that they had, like, real problems. People couldn't get work. People couldn't get childcare. And, you know, one of the reasons that we decided to work on public transit was because that cuts through a lot of those. The reason they couldn't work is couldn't get a job, wasn't because there wasn't a job out there, it's because they literally couldn't get to it. You know, Applebee's hiring a chef on Upper Peach Street. The buses stop running at 9:30, right? So, you know, unless you have a ride, you're out of luck. I don't like everything about this compromise. I'd like to see a broader vision. I'd like to see more enhancements to public transit, but there's something deeper here, which is to say that, you know, the earlier gentleman's point about the pitchforks is pretty real. I think we see that at the national level. Over time, as this has gone on, you know, we have, these ideas of extending bus service or working to try and get better service that services more places, more people, has fallen to the wayside because of this impasse in particular. And, you know, I think that, you know, if we can't come together at this level, how are we going to come together as a country? And so, you know, I think, I may be mistaken, but as I look at the resolution, it appears that there's a section that wasn't in the version the county council passed last night, and I may be mistaken here, but the last section about an independent riders advisory council seems like it might be a good olive branch on that front. And if I'm wrong about that, I might be wrong. But, you know, look, we got a week. But, uh, you know, look, we got a week. Um, if this doesn't go through, I don't think anybody knows for sure what will happen. It looks like the state will come in and take over the public transit. I don't think that's good for anybody, um, especially riders. So I hope that we can come to some sort of understanding. I don't understand all of the inner dynamics between the county and city, but we've gotta work together to get these things done. So I applaud those that have worked towards that. I know some people have put in many extra hours the last few weeks. Uh, it's been a long slog over the last few months, but you know, it's crunch time. We gotta get this done. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard?
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Margaret Watts. I live in Washington Township in Edinburgh. I'm urging this governing body to work towards the researched guidance provided in emerged 2040 and Erie refocused, moving towards a regional effort to achieve common goals between the city of Erie and Erie County, especially at this time with regards to the EMTA charter. I'd like to share a personal experience with you, helpful for expressing my point of view. A few summers ago, I got to know a young African-American psychology major while enrolled in a statistics class at Edinburgh University of Pennsylvania. Vanessa was always arriving early, long before class, and she was often asleep at her desk. Following class, we would work on assignments on the insight, or in the onsite computer lab. This is when I got to learn of her life circumstances and the difficult challenges she faced. She was a member of a fragmented family, some living in Pittsburgh and some in Erie. Vanessa was living with an aunt on the east side of Erie and commuted daily to the Edinburgh campus using the EMTA. She was bound by the EMTA schedule for scheduling her classes and maintaining a job back in Erie. This tight scheduling structure left little flexibility in her life when class assignments required additional computer time or her job demanded longer work hours. I experienced the anxiety of research data not working through the software program adequately and witnessed other students' disappointment, requiring numerous attempts to complete the assignment by deadline. Some students left to go to other classes, but Vanessa would have to leave to catch the last bus to get back to Erie without finishing the assignment. In frustration, she asked me if I could take her to Erie so she could complete our assignment. I had the means and desire to help her on a couple of these occasions. Her dependency on the EMTA was directly tied to her success or non-success at completing her degree. If Vanessa felt empowered and thought she could make an impact for improving life for herself and others, wouldn't she be a valuable asset for the EMTA? Would Vanessa's circumstances, as well as many others, be entered into a database for future decisions? Why couldn't Vanessa or others like her become a voting voice for representing the ridership of the EMTA? Vanessa's experience as a daily commuter between the city and the county, as well as within the city, would be a valuable asset for representing EMTA's ridership. Why not share the power with those whose lives are directly related and affected by the EMTA? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard?
Rebecca Pruvidenny, 3005 Hastings Road. Uh, I'm a lifelong resident of Erie. Uh, at simultaneous periods, I've owned homes in both Mill Creek Township and the city of Erie. This is my home. Um, last night, I attended a county council meeting and encouraged them to vote for the proposal. Just minutes prior to the vote, the legality of the proposal became a question and the proposal was voted down. Now I ask you, if representatives on both councils, after working 12 to 16 months to figure out this problem, didn't know that there was a legality question in regards to the proposal, then you have all, all missed the point. You need, your concern is for the ridership. That is your only concern, is what is best to do for the ridership, the people who do not. I wanna know, show hands, and I asked county council last night, how many of you people ride the bus this morning to get here, to go to doctor's appointments, school, childcare? You are toying with these people. You are toying with their lives. You should all be ashamed of yourself. After 16 months of trying to figure this out, now a question of legality comes up? Oh, well, we'll just let the state take over the EMTA. That was your answer. No Plan B. If you think that you have a job that is thankless and you didn't have a Plan B, the two things are connected. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Any other citizens to be heard?
Cindy Purvis, 101 West 34th Street in Erie. First, I'd like to thank Dave Brennan and Mal Witherspoon for helping to draft a compromise for the EMTA charter dispute. We, the taxpayers of the city, deserve to know how many more thousands of dollars will be added to the $370,000 that we will have to pay if the city wins and does not share the cost of EMTA with the county. Who will pay? Will it be the riders who obviously don't have extra cash to throw around? Will it be grandma who takes the lift to her doctor's appointments? Will it be the property owners who are already doing a heavy lift, paying for all the nonprofit land within our borders? What will that lawsuit cost? Was any of that taken into consideration? But I think our basic question is why? Why any of this? We haven't heard why anyone would be opposed to this compromise. We've heard a little bit of words put together in a sentence that makes no sense whatsoever, but the thing is, if you vote against this compromise, we deserve to know why. In a sentence, that's understandable. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Any other citizens to be heard?
Good morning. Kathy Fatika, Mill, I reside in Mill Creek. I work in the city of Erie. I hadn't planned to speak today, but I've heard some things that, um, I'm not comfortable with, and I just want to address those. Members of county council are colleagues, coworkers, and friends. You are not politicians, you are public servants, and that is what I have observed. So I want to thank each and every one of you for your service, and I want to thank you for your consideration on the resolution. It may not be a perfect resolution, but it's a place that we've started. And I guess from my background as a nurse, I think about decisions that I make regarding, um, doing no harm, looking at the good of the many, whether it was an individual patient or working, um, in its community health, where you're looking at the entire community. So with that being said, I again want to thank you for considering the resolution. I want to thank, uh, President Mersky, Mal Witherspoon, and Dave Brennan for meeting with us. Um, and I, I want you to think about the decision that you're about to make, whether you're going for a compromise or a conflict or court. And I'm hoping that you choose compromise. Thank you again for your service.
Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard?
Hi, good morning, Council. John Whaley, 447 Gordon Lane, I live up in Glenwood. Um, first off, I was looking through the proposal of all the purchases we're gonna do, and I know there's two people in purchasing, but I went ahead and spent 18 seconds and found, um, orange safety vests, DOT approved, two color, for $8.99 apiece. We don't have to pay $17.50 from a firm in Buffalo. So we could've just saved about $900 using Google Shopping. I think that's what those people should do is go out, get bids, shop, search, for a total of, um, you know, 5200. If we turn that into 4200, then you have $1,000 left over. And then that thousand, you can spend on other stuff that's really important. Summer jobs programs, paving, repaying bonds, funding the pensions that are $81 million underfunded. It's only a thousand bucks. I get it, but it all adds up. So I'm gonna jump on the bandwagon with EMTA. I think it's a farce that you even have it on the agenda today and we spent the time and we had the clerk type it up, and it's a page and a half of where it is and who for and whatever. Four of you aren't gonna vote for it. You've already said so in the paper, you've said so, um, some of you on social media, uh, seen some stuff on TV. Unless I'm completely wrong, I don't, I don't think it's gonna pass. I don't even know why it would be on here. And I do agree with the lady before me, I'm not sure anyone has put together a coherent, independent, thought-out reason why they would vote against it, why it's a bad thing. I hear that it's great now and everything's good and we should just keep doing that. Doesn't seem great. Um, they do have a new terminal, I get it, we got federal money to pay for that terminal. But I don't know if, of all the energy spent in the last 16 months, and very little 16 months ago, a lot in the last, let's say 90 days or four months, a lot on fiefdom, control, status quo, boards, appointments. I haven't heard, and I don't know if any of these people have, heard about, hey, we're gonna get new buses. Hey, we've got new routes. Hey, we're gonna replace these aging bus shelters that are a pile of crap for our riders. Hey, we're gonna do this. Nope. I want six board seats. I want control. I like it. 50 years, new renewal. No- nobody does anything for 50 years. None of you sign 50-year leases, you don't buy a car for 50 years, you didn't finance your home for 50 years. It, it's too much. So I think it's a joke that it's on here. But the point I'd like to make, I could be wrong about this, I'm wrong about a lot of stuff. Um, there's an old story about Van Halen when they went on tour, and they would insist on a bowl of brown M&amp;M's sitting on the table, uh, when they came into their dressing room. And I never understood what that was all about. Bowl of brown M&amp;M's? I thought, oh, these guys are just ridiculous. It was a test. The road manager knew that if he came in and saw the brown M&amp;M's, everything else was probably taken care of. The sound, the lights, security, it was all taken care of. This, to me, is the bowl of brown M&amp;M's. You're not handling this. This is a no-brainer. This thing should've been put to bed 14 months ago. It's not. It's last-minute deadline, we're gonna force somebody's hand, we're not gonna do anything. If you can't agree and make something happen on EMTA, where are you at on the budget? Nowhere. It's September 7th. You'll get a budget in December and then you'll talk about it for two days. Let's worry about the $100 million we're gonna spend next year. Let's spend this much energy talking about crime and how we're combating it, how we're gonna get some more police on the street, how we're gonna help get kids out of poverty, how we're gonna create jobs, all kinds of things. Status quo, you're gonna talk about EMTA, gonna bat it around, we're not gonna do anything, then the state's gonna come in. It, it's shameful. We're not taking care, you're not taking care of the taxpayers, the people that pay your salaries, people that pay for this building and these lights, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Any other citizens to be heard? Seeing none, we'll continue on with the meeting.
Ordinances for first reading. Council file number 15965. An ordinance in accordance with the 2016 City of Erie budget, the sum of $13,789.79, is appropriated from unappropriated and anticipated revenue for use by the City of Erie Fire Department. These funds were received via a contribution from the Pennsylvania State Fire Commissioner's Fixed Asset Program. By Mr. Kwiatowski, seconded by Mr. Brennan, the council file ordinance number 15965, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 15965 by A7, nay zero on first reading. I have a couple of things under old business, Mr. President.
Okay.
By Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, resolved by the council of the City of Erie, that the proper city officials are authorized and directed to file a renewal application with Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board for the purpose of exempting the areas identified as Zone 1, Cranberry Street to Parade Street, north edge of Second Street to the water's edge, and Zone 2, Holland Street to Peach Street, 14th Streets north to the northern edge of Second Street. On the map attached here to is Exhibit A from 47 PS, Section 493.34, regarding amplified music being heard off premises. Council also authorized the initial application by resolution on March 8th, 2006, and renewed again on April 15th, 2009, and March 21st, 2012. This renewal application shall be for a three-year period. If the board approves, the city will enforce its own noise control ordinance at Article 705 of the codified ordinances. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mersky. By Mr. Witherspoon and seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, resolved by the council of the City of Erie, that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to enter into a contract extension with Building Inspection Underwriters of Pennsylvania, Inc., 4538 Peach Street, Erie, PA 16509, at the current rates for inspection services for the City of Erie's rental program through March 2017. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jones.
Um, and we had some conversation around this in caucus in relation to the extension going through until, uh, sunset provision, which is coming up next year, on whether the, this ordinance and this process is, uh, working, we're gonna assess it, evaluate it, et cetera, put certain breaks on it to be able to evaluate it. Uh, my only question, um, is actually having a tangible copy of the contract. Uh, I know this, we've kinda set some precedent for at least these kinds of sidebar or comments on votes related to contracts being available, whether the council to see a hard copy or electronic copy, the controller having to see a hard copy, cause when we vote, go, you know, checks have to be signed by the controller. And, um, again, I know this is just an extension, nothing's changing, we're gonna extend it for a few months, but again, for the sake of the conversation, uh, looking to change things and do things a little bit more, now, I won't use the term transparent, cause that sounds, um, somewhat negative, not that anything's going on, we know what we're gonna do, we know what we wanna do, but it's just smart to have, uh, hard copies available to people who have to sign checks. And so I wanted to just kinda put that out there. Again, we, we talked about looking at contracts of all types with a tighter, um, or a more tuned-in microscope. And, uh, so this is, you know, once we move from this space of extension, uh, with, if we decide to continue a process and rebid and, and, uh, put out another contract, we really wanna make sure we have co- copies of those contracts available and accessible to the legislators and, and, and elected officials who need to see them for, for their jobs to be done effectively. I am gonna vote in favor of it because of the conversation around extension and, and how it's sunset provision anyway. Um, if it was just for three or four years, I would absolutely not vote for it. But again, with the, with an inherent deadline on it, I feel a little more comfortable, but just definitely wanted to make that point. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any other, I'm sorry, Mr. Um, Mrs. Robie, any other council members wish this?
Yes, uh, I intend to. I intend to vote no for the reasons I outlined last meeting. Uh, I'm not convinced that they're doing their job. Uh, and I believe, Mr. Jones, uh, I'm gonna research it, but I believe we have an ordinance on the books where the controller is supposed to receive all contracts. That was put in when I was in office, and I believe she's not getting them presently and that, there's a problem with that. So I'm gonna prepare a resolution next meeting that addresses the issue that all contracts will be in one spot in City Hall, they'll not be scattered through the building, they'll be easy for her to, the controller, or whoever that is in the future, to be able to find them. And, uh, I think that'll solve a lot of the problems we're having with various contracts lapsing. be easy for her, the controller, or whoever that is in the future, to be able to find them. And I think that'll solve a lot of the problems we're having with various contracts lapsing and various contracts not being able to be found. We asked for this contract a couple of meetings ago and we still didn't get it. And that disappoints me, so I will prepare a resolution, but I think we already have an ordinance, I'm gonna double-check that. So I intend to vote no.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I just, to reiterate, and kinda piggyback off of what Councilman Jones said, I am going to vote for this with, with the expectation that we are going to have a study session. This expires in March of 2017 and we will, we have that sunset provision put in by council so that we can review the program every so many years. And we do need to make some changes. From, unfortunately, the last time that we bid this out, BIU was the only bidder, from what we're told. So I would like to see the administration make a concerted effort to get more people to bid on this position, on this contract. I have a lot of complaints from the citizens about BIU and their handling of the rental inspection program. I guess the best from inter-rater reliability, different inspectors enforce different things at different levels. That's not good for our citizens. And, and so we need to tighten up the belt, so to speak, and we will do that as a council at our study session. But as everybody knows, we can write the best thing, but when it's executed outside of our purview by an independent contractor, that's when things become problematic. So with that, any other comments from council? We'll take the vote.
Continuing the roll call, Mr. Kwiatowski.
Uh, no.
Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mursky. All right. This resolution will adopt by ye six, nays one. That'll take us into new business. A resolution by Mr. Brennan, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon. This resolution was revised since the agenda was put out. Partnering with the Erie County for a regional transportation system. Whereas the City of Erie and Erie County governments continue their historical partnerships of major regional assets, including the Erie Regional Airport Authority and Erie County Convention Center Authority. And whereas, the City of Erie believes a regional approach to transportation in partnership with Erie County is in the best interest of citizens now and in the future. And whereas, the Erie City Council of Erie County seeks an amended EMTA charter agreement between the City of Erie and Erie County governmental units, which should include the following amendments. Number one, the charter shall take effect on September 15th, 2016, and expire on September 14th, 2036, making, making the length of the new charter twenty years. The Board will be comprised of five appointees from the city council and four appointees from the county council. Number three, Erie County Council's appointees will be appointed at their discretion without advice or consent by the Erie County Executive. Number four, Erie City Council's appointments will be appointed at their discretion without advice or consent by the mayor of the City of Erie. Number five, Article Five, Board Compensation Revised, Composition Revised. A, new board appointments will be made upon acceptance by the city and county of all amendments to the charter and subsequent renewal of the charter. B, the Board shall be composed of nine appointees by the City, Erie City Council and Erie County Council, and shall serve five-year terms as required, required by the Municipalities Authority Act. Number six, regarding financing of the EMTA, all member municipalities currently paying funds toward EMTA will remain the same rate of funding pending evaluation and possible recommendations by the new EMTA Board. Number seven, since forty percent of the Erie County population resides within the City of Erie, the city's contribution will be forty percent of the remaining local match and sixty percent will be the county's contribution. Number eight, EMT bylaws shall be amended to include language that a complete financial statement will be available to all board members and provided to the County of Erie and City of Erie at each board meeting. All EMTA subcommittees shall have a minimum of one appointment from the County of Erie and the City of Erie, and appointment to these subcommittees should reflect the background and skill of said member. Number ten, the new EMTA charter will allow for the creation of a Riders Advisory Council to provide additional feedback to EMTA. The members of the Advisory Council will consist of one member representing Voices for Independence, all aboard Erie, a student writer from Mercyhurst University Northeast, a student writer from Edinburgh University, a student writer from Penn State Baron, a student writer from the School District of the City of Erie, one at-large member nominated by the county executive, and one at-large member nominated by the mayor of the City of Erie. The deliberations and decisions of the Riders Advisory Council will be non-binding. Now therefore be it resolved by the Erie City Council declares its intent to support an amended EMTA charter, which contains the above amendments and all other updated language appropriate to a 2016 through 2036 charter. Erie County Councils hereby respectfully urge to provide this amended charter containing this compromise language. Yet further resolved, Erie City Council authorize and directs the city solicitor to cease its current legal action against the County of Erie. Mrs. Arrington.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Arrington.
This has been going on way too long, this EMTA issues. We have a lot of other issues that we need to address up here on council, but we really can't get to them until this is addressed. You know, we're up here for our citizens, and I sit and I listen to whatever our citizens talk to us about and tell us about. You know, I really think that we have to unify ourselves as public officials. We are all up here, we were elected to do a job, we're supposed to work for our citizens. And with everything that's going on in our community, one thing that I always say, we as a community need to unify, but we also, as elected officials, need to unify. So I vote in favor of this today. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Brennan.
Thank you. First of all, I wanted to say, due to receiving some information on a couple of the details and also input from several members of council, I made the change to the resolution as was written on the original agenda. The change involves the appointees to the Board and the Board composition. And I wanna read kind of a discussion that I've kinda shared with a lot of members of council and county council. Working together with Erie County and uniting to approve a new EMT charter would be a positive step forward for our entire region. I am sure we all agree, city and council governments, county governments need to strengthen our relationships and discuss how we can better collaborate and share our resources. Since the city and the county governments share many of the same concerns, tax base, constituency, we need to do better, and I believe we will someday. The proposed compromise exemplifies a regional approach to governance of our transportation system and also aligns with the goals of Emerge 2040. Collaborating on EMTA regional governance sets a stage for an EMTA to move forward with a transportation study that was recently proposed by the EMTO, I'm sorry, the MPO, the Erie Metropolitan Planning Organization. The study would be conducted, conducted to ensure that all municipalities and organizations are paying their fair share for transportation services. Regarding the proposed EMTA charter resolution, I wanna clarify that we're voting on a resolution, not an ordinance. The final details, municipal authorities' act legalities, and the legal processes of this resolution would be addressed following approval. I believe that if Erie City Council and Erie County Council can agree on the EMTA charter compromise, we can work together with the EMTA to take the next steps to finalize approval of charter. If the proposed resolution and the EMTA charter fails today, the City of Erie would most likely become the sole sponsoring municipality of the authority. If this happens, the following are my main concerns. The plan on how the city and the EMTA will pay for the required transit funding match has not been communicated. If this plan exists, it has not been discussed with all members of city council. More importantly, it has not been discussed with other municipalities and organizations that currently contribute to the matching, the funding match. This action could initiate financial uncertainty to the EMTA as well as the City of Erie and most likely place additional financial burden on our city taxpayers. Given the current financial needs of our city to fight crime, to fight blight removal, to fund the maintenance and continued improvement of our city's infrastructure, we do not have a budget to make up for the transportation funding that would no longer come from Erie County. The existing City of Erie lawsuit to remove Erie County from the EMTA charter and further court fight would waste further time and taxpayer dollars. Another failure of our city and county officials to work together to solve a region's problems will continue to send a strong signal to businesses and residences in Erie County and outside our region that the City of Erie and Erie County are not the places they should invest or raise a family. I'm optimistic and believe that a positive conclusion to this matter would help to strengthen our ability of our city and county officials to work together and collaborate in the future. Emerge 2040 has laid recommendations for our future, our region's future. It is now up to us, both the City of Erie and Erie County, to continue to move forward and overcome our challenges. We hold the keys to our future, and we have some very important decisions ahead of us. We can decide to continue with business-as-usual management, or we can decide to fight for our region, improve our quality of life, and plan a better future for our community together. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. President. Mr. Winarski.
I'll be brief. As this saga has been going on for the last sixteen months, and as liaison to the EMTA, we have been very transparent on our end on what has transpired and what's going on with the negotiations, with how the EMTA themselves are handling this. I mean, at this point, just this morning, this resolution was presented to me at 8:30, as well as some other council members here. And discussion on it in caucus before this meeting and this vote was ten minutes. Although some of the items in here may be good, a shorter charter, twenty, twenty-five years, a lot of the other language in here is not. To vote on something with ten minutes of conversation doesn't do, justify, or wouldn't be responsible for the citizens of Erie. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Excuse me, Mr. President.
Jones.
I'll try to be brief, but I'm not really good at being brief.
No guarantee.
Yeah, no promises, right? I agree with a lot of the language around saga, drama, pontification, show-off, Stanton, all of that. I get it, I understand that. I don't think that's the intent many of us as elected officials on a county or city level. I do think that, regrettably, the conversation has been so skewed and apples and orange, apples and oranges have kinda come up in the conversation, meaning what, what started this was the fact that the charter is up for a vote, or we have to reinstitute a charter for the next however many years to provide transit authority to our citizens of Erie County, inclusive, of course, of the city. What happened, though, I think, and this is just my assessment of it, and I may be on or off in certain points, but what happened was, I think the charter approving process has been hijacked. And I've been pretty quiet about this, so I'll just kinda share it now. I feel it's kinda been hijacked, because a lot of the things that we're talking about that are holding up the approval of a charter are not charter issues. Now, if we're talking about twenty years, twenty-five years versus fifty, that's a charter issue. There are other elements and conversations that are not charter issues, so that's my point around apples and oranges. We could pass the charter with a shorter length of time, a few other nuances, and still have time to work out whatever needs to be worked out as far as the number of seats and appointments. That's not necessarily an issue that has to be solved before the charter's passed. So I think it's been a bit of a, a holdoff and a standoff there. Respectfully, and I agree one hundred percent, that there are areas in the county that have less coverage as far as busing and opportunity for, for, you know, jobs in Mill Creek, from Northeast, all those stories, I am empathetic to and understand their reality. But here's the thing, we assume, or pre-assume, that a change in governance or a change in who appoints who is gonna change how the EMTA operates. Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't. I think that's an assumption that we have to be careful, to think that just because we have maybe county council members appointing more than city council or whatever, that it's gonna change anything. I'll go back to the first meeting that we had in county council chambers, our committee with the county council committee, and one of the questions that we asked is, can you give us a list, and some of you were in the room, can you give us a list of the things that you wanna change right now about EMTA? That's why you wanted to have the governance over the appointments and et cetera. And quite literally, they said, well, nothing really. So if things are so horrible and how things are being operated by EMTA, then why wouldn't there be a list? Now, a list arrived later, during the conversation, the dialogue and the drama, but those are things that had nothing to do with board governance. It has to do with the EMTA staff implementing certain policies that would be approved and ratified by the authority. Interestingly enough, there are nine appointees, and five of them are non-city right now. You know, we're talking about Lake City and Northeast, and I believe wholeheartedly, I work in those areas with my nine-to-five job. And of course, it's always great to have more transit and more transportation opportunities. I'm not minimizing that. I'm not a status quo person, believe it or not. I don't think that there's things in the EMTA that can't be improved on, I believe that wholeheartedly there are. But again, changing governance and who has the most appointments doesn't guarantee change, or process change, or institutional change in the way that the EMTA is run. We've seen several changes when the executive director was switched. We've seen a lot of changes on that level. Again, we talk about, again, the fringe, more fringe or remote areas. Respectfully, the county executive has three, I believe, appointments, and none of those appointments represent Lake City, Gerard, Northeast, Harbor Creek, I don't believe, it's Mill Creek and Fairview. Those, I mean, there's opportunities in the current structure to change and include a more variety or more broader county representation on the, the EMTA Board. So again, I don't wanna be overly long about this. I think we really need to look at what are real charter issues and make those the points of conversation, and not the, the quote-unquote "power struggle" that we feel like we're having. With that said, though, I think people keep referencing the Erie Regional Airport Authority. I think a lot of people need to remember that process. This process is nothing compared to the craziness of about eight, nine years ago, when we were dealing with the, regionalizing the airport authority. I mean, it got almost physical at times. And I got a phone call from someone in the conversation that said, you need to remember the golden rule. And I was like, well, what do you mean? He who has the gold rules. And that was the aura and the attitude that we were dealing with, and we still have some of that today. We, we can just envelop all the local match. Well, if you're so concerned, I'm just gonna, I'm done after this, I promise, I think, but if we're so concerned on a county level about violence and issues and poverty, and I believe they are, when I say they, elected officials on a county level, I believe are wholeheartedly, I'm not minimizing that, but you have the resources financially to put into the city, which is a part of the county, if you, to put into the city that's, again, a part of the county, if there is, wherever your heart is, that's where your money goes. And so if you're telling us, hey, we'll envelop the local match so that you can take $270,000 and put it towards youth poverty and summer jobs, and, well, why are we holding up the conversation based on that? Just give us the $270,000 and allow it to be used in these areas in the city, since the city's a part of the county and you care so much. Those are just conversations that, again, we can have, but I think will be a little bit more legitimate. And finally, I'll say, these types of resolutions that I'm gonna vote against today, not because I don't think they're an effort and compromise, I think there are some components that we just haven't looked at. Again, are we gonna agree that a third party, who's the third-party group that's going to assess who should pay how much? Like, those are nuances that we have to talk about, that we can't talk about, you know, ten minutes before the meeting, or even a couple of days before the meeting. And honestly, when the county voted down yesterday of something very similar, what are we voting for? If the county's already said no. And my last, finally, I do apologize, 'cause I, I don't wanna, I haven't said a lot about this, so I'm getting it all out now. We're doing this backwards. The county council, city council, we're going back and forth, throwing lobs of ideas to each other, and I don't know how many times I've heard the EMTA as a body or as an organization have been brought into the conversation. This, really, all this stuff should be coming from and emanating from the authority, their ideas on charter. We have, it's been a political elected official conversation, but I don't know how much the authority's been involved, or I'll say publicly, or brought into some of our public sessions. public sessions on how they feel about this stuff. Because we passed this today, and the county could have passed it yesterday, and the county, the EMTA still has to be the one that it emanates from or comes from for us to come back and pass it as residual or ordinance form. Did we talk to the board and see if there's a consensus or a majority vote on the board for something like this? I don't know if we did or not. I know I literally was coming down here today and ran into a member of the EMTA board, he rolled his window down and said, don't vote for it! I mean, I heard that, I don't count, again, that's not changing my vote, one way or the other. But I think those are some of the things that would be more legitimate versus just this apples and oranges and telling stories about young students in Edinburgh. I think that's important, I wholeheartedly believe that. But that doesn't mean a change in a governance is going to change the things that riders want to have improved, like schedules and bus shelters again. That doesn't change by who appoints who. So I'm going to be voting against this with the caveat that I'm still willing to have a legitimate conversation with the county, with this body, because we don't agree, obviously, to do what's best for the citizens. My biggest thing is, don't let the buses stop. Whatever that means, we can't let the buses stop. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Any other discussion?
Yes, it's pretty hard to follow Mr. Jones. I cannot match his eloquence or his passion, but it's not often I praise you, Curtis, right?
I don't get too much from you, Cass.
No, but, in all sincerity, I mean, I agree with Curtis on a lot of the issues. When we first met with county council, I'm not going to rehash it, we were miscategorized in the media, it wasn't reported, you know, we'd never met with him, it's not true at all. We did meet with him, but it was more like being, and I'll say this analogy, it was a lot like being Lee at Appomattox, the Japanese on the deck in Missouri. By the times, it was more like Panmun John. We offered all these things, we offered him a twenty-year contract, only to hear back was all or nothing. That's not negotiation. We've been trying to meet with him, and I really appreciate the work of my, the attempt by many members of the county council to work with us, and there's still time. But this issue should have never been brought to our attention by an article written in Erie Daily Times. It's the first time we ever heard about it. Now, you may have talked to the mayor, and that's fine, but you've got to remember that council and the administration are not the same body. The mayor doesn't always tell us who he meets with, and we don't tell, you know, and that's a fault maybe on our side, but playing this out in the media was the wrong way to start this out. If you'd have come to council and said you had a problem with the charter, we didn't hear about it till after we voted on it. Only to go to the meeting and be handed a piece of paper with a list of demands. And I say this day, I'm still willing to meet with you, but I have some issues, and I'll say this, I was there when, on the school board, when we turned over the library to the county, and it was the right thing to do. It really was. It wasn't our mission any longer as a school district. I was around as controller when the airport authority was, as Curtis so eloquently said, was kind of taken and made more regional. We have regionalized the water authority, we have regionalized the civic center. These are all good things. This one, I have some problems with. We're negotiating at the last minute, I'm not happy with, and I still haven't got an answer on item six and seven in the articles, the finances are a little fuzzy, and for someone who's an accountant, I don't like fuzzy numbers, I like a little more concrete. And I think those are some of the main issues that I look at. When I deal with the people I talk to around the City of Erie, and they most certainly thought me at various places around town, it was unanimous, almost, well, I wouldn't say unanimous, but I would say eighty-five to ninety percent of them were adamant that we have fair representation, but also that the financing issue gets addressed. And that's something that I think that scares the heck out of the county. But for years, you know, the numbers have been reported that the city paid less. That's not true. When you were using tax money, thirty-eight and forty percent of that came out of the city coffers, in addition to our contribution. So let's tell the truth there. But I'm still willing to negotiate, but I just think this thing got off to a bad start, and there was a period where nothing was happening, and now here we are scrambling, and I just think there's too many unknowns in this thing, and it's still not, to my satisfaction, good for the residents of the City of Erie whom I represent. And with that, I'll leave it, I'll leave that ride.
Thank you, Mr. Kowalski.
Mr. President, real quick, one thing I forgot, here's another piece of this puzzle. The county devoted to pull out financially of being a part of the local match. So, again, we're talking about the concern for ridership, we're talking about the concern on making sure buses don't stop. Again, and I know this may sound a little facetious, and I might be being a little sarcastic right now, okay, I admit it, I am, but I've got thirteen brothers and sisters, and we used to have this whole thing where just because you're losing the game, or just because you feel like you're not winning, don't mean you take your ball and go home. And I feel like, on a certain level, when you pull out financially and put the entire process at jeopardy for a local match and ways for transit to be funded on a local level, I think that, that's a part of the conversation we have to have, too, to have a legitimate conversation. Now, everybody has their side, quote-unquote, of the story or perspective, and I value that, I appreciate it, but we have to have a full conversation, and that's something that has to be a part of the conversation. Because you can't throw the moral question of, why wouldn't the city allow the finances to be taken over by the county, throw it as a moral question to us without saying, well, why did you take out because you didn't get what you wanted, the same money you're talking about? That's, that's an apples-and-apples conversation that we need to have. Sorry, I just thought about that.
Just a few things I just want to recap real quick, just so the public knows where, how we got here and where we are. About a year and a half ago, EMTA renewed the charter for the EMTA Transit Authority. The city passed the charter, and the county unanimously rejected the charter. That's when negotiations started. Now, there was some stuff in the paper in between, but nothing, nothing between the During the negotiation session, the county started their own transportation authority. It's still on the books, they have their regional transportation authority that they created separate from EMTA. During that time, county council also cut funding unanimously for EMTA buses. During that time, the county also voted to pull out of EMTA by June 30th unanimously. And last night, the county rejected the compromise proposal. And I think what was telling was, all the city representatives on county council voted against the compromise. All the city representatives on county council voted against the compromise. I personally have met with Councilman Horton and Pendott many times, and, you know, we tried to work something out. Councilman Horton, you know, shared that, you know, local match should be representative of, you know, the board seats, we said we were willing to work on that, and then it transitioned to, well, no, we really didn't mean that, we meant something else. And then I've also, and I want to thank Kathy and Ed, you know, Councilwoman Fatika and Councilman DiMatteo for all their hard work. I mean, you know, you have two representatives here who are willing to sit down at the table and have an honest conversation, and I can't thank you guys enough for the work that you've done. And what we've, what we've done, though, to Curtis's point, is all stuff that can be done outside of a charter. Pass a charter, we've passed a charter, if you want it twenty years, that's fine, but pass a charter, and we can discuss local match, we can discuss board representation, we can discuss all these other things. Because what people forget is that we did all those things with the airport authority and with the convention center authority in the middle of charters. We did those, and we worked together. And the county, I think there's this misconception that the city and county battle all the time. We worked together on so many things, Unified Erie, we're working on the opioid addiction issue. You know, there's a lot of things that we worked together on outside of EMTA, and those things are going to continue. But at this point, and to Curtis's point, you know, we're at a point where I think everyone's sick of talking about the buses. We need to move on, and, you know, I urge the county to pass a charter, and we can move on with all these other things that we need to talk about that are legitimate issues. We also have to remember the fact that this is mass transportation, and as great as it sounds to say, oh, we want service to Albion, and we want service to, you know, Gerard and Corey, if there's not ridership, it's a, you can't, you can only subsidize so much before it becomes unfeasible. And Pendott comes in and tells you, and case in point, there used to be a bus that went to Albion, it had eight riders a week. Pendott came in and said, shut it down. Pendott controls a lot of what goes on with EMTA, and it's a business decision. It's a business decision, and it's mass transit for a reason, you need a mass of people in order for it to operate without huge subsidies. So with that, we will take the vote.
Roll call, Mrs. Arrington.
Yes.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
No.
Mr. Kowalski.
No.
Mr. Wenarski.
No.
Mr. Witherspoon.
He's a yes, he's out.
He had to leave.
Mr. Mursky.
No.
This resolution failed to adopt, ayes three, nays four. Got a transfer in the 2016 police general fund account?
I'd like to make a motion to move the balance of the agenda.
Alrighty.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any separations?
Any separations? Seeing none?
All right, moving the balance of the agenda, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Wenarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Mursky. That will take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Committee reports, Mrs. Arrington.
I have no report at this time, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Very briefly, want to, again, take a moment to thank Kim Green for her service to this community, excuse me, through the Economic Development Department of the City of Erie, as well as the Redevelopment Authority, and then back again to the economic development, and just what she's done, although we didn't always agree, but she was great to work with, and you knew where she stood, whether you agree with that or not, and I can have a lot of respect for that, and I do, to her. So as she moves on in her career and whatever her next steps are, send blessings to her and hope that all things go well and exactly the way she wants them to go. And it was truly a pleasure working with her over the last ten years. Also want to welcome Chris Mong to the Economic Development Department of the city, and look forward to working with him, we worked together previously on a lot of city and county and even state issues, his experience in the state, on the state level with economic development will, I'm sure, hopefully, I'm sure, it will come to be an asset for us on the local and on the city level. So, again, thank Kim for her service, and thank you to Chris, and look forward to working with him to be, again, as effective as possible in the area of economic development for our city, which is a big time for us. Finally, I do want to, you know, I did kind of have my comments, and I don't know if I said it openly or directly enough, that even though we disagree, and I disagree personally with certain ideas and resolutions and proposals, I value everyone's opinion, every elected official, every volunteer, every citizen, and we just make, we work to make the decisions based on what we think is best, and sometimes there's differences in that. But all the work that, as Mr. Mursky, council president, mentioned with David Brennan and Mr. Witherspoon and council members, county council members, working together to try and nuance, every one of us has been working, and are sometimes largely, but you have to remember, too, sometimes you can't get more than three council members in the room before it becomes illegal, so those are nuances as well that you have to, you know, the citizens need to remember. But we are working together, we're continuing to do what's best, and I think that, you know, we can definitely make some things happen if we continue to work together, even though we disagree, we don't have to be so disagreeable all the time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Kowalski.
We got a little bit more work to do today, so I have no report, really.
Okay. I just wanted to give best wishes to Chief Randy Bowers on his retirement, and welcome Chief Dacus into the Police Department, also to welcome Chris Mong to the Department of Community and Economic Development, and to wish Kim Green well. She was great to work with, but I'm really, but also, I'm excited to work with Chris Mong, he has, comes with a background at the state level from DCED, and we're hoping for good things from that department. Also, I just wanted to thank everybody who participated in the Labor Day Parade. All of our labor unions were out, and it was seventeen hundred people marched in the parade. These are your neighbors and coworkers, and it was a really, it's one of the few parades where it's about the working people, and it was really a great parade to be a part of, and I want to thank everyone for that. With that, we're going to have a finance meeting after this meeting in the caucus room to discuss the budget, contrary to, you know, what one of the citizens said, we do discuss the budget regularly, and periodically throughout the year, we do do the work that's necessary, we don't just come in in December with a budget. So with that, this meeting is adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going ahead. I could only, I can only hope, I'm sorry, Mrs. Stankevich, I apologize. City Controller.
Thank you, Mr. President. This morning in caucus, I presented everybody with the 2017 MMO, so if anybody has any questions, you can let me know, but it briefly is explained in the letter that I gave to you all, so.
Perfect. And you'll be at the finance meeting, so if anyone has any questions, they can ask them at that time. Administration, Ms. Beck.
Thank you, Mr. President, I think everything has been said, no report.
Thank you. Now with that, meeting adjourned.
City Council adjourns at 10:37. Mr. Mursky, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Wenarski, Mr. Witherspoon.